Good evening. And welcome to the Southeast Delco School District Board of Directors Committee of the Hall for Thursday, November the ninth, two thousand twenty-three. We are thankful for all of you for being out here tonight. We are going to start with a presentation from the Minority Center. Okay. So we will move on to education. Um, next, finance. There's nothing but two, um, normal contracts. Okay?
All right, uh, finance, uh, there are, uh, three items, uh, on the finance, uh, committee agenda, uh, and there is, I'll cover one in, um, under HR as well. Yes. Uh, so the first one is, uh, if you will recall, last month, we approved, uh, our bond counsel, we approved the financial advisor, our solicitor, uh, to, uh, provide services in relationship, in relations to refinancing, uh, some existing debt that we have. Uh, so this is just the next step. Uh, this resolution will be refined. Um, I received the packet, so there are a couple of changes. It will be very similar to this, but it'll, uh, be additional information in the resolution for your approval, uh, next, uh, week. And again, this is to refinance, it's refinancing a general obligation bond seventeen A and seventeen B. Uh, and the plan or the, what we expect from this is that there will be bond savings, uh, and we'll take those savings and keep them in the savings account and, uh, for use of future, uh, construct, uh, capital improvements. Uh, item two, this is a ratification. As you know, we've been using foundations to have, uh, provide us with, uh, assistant principals for some of our vacancies. Uh, I thought that this one was approved at the time, uh, when we discussed it back in August, it was, I looked at the board minutes and it was not approved, so that's why it has a ratification. And this will just cover from the beginning of the school year, uh, up through August thirty-first, uh, or that would be the latest, um, but it could go up through just June thirtieth when school ends. Uh, item three, uh, the, uh, there were, uh, four oh-three B deposits that were made late, uh, into, uh, uh, staff members' accounts, uh, and this is a simple calculation of interest that they could have possibly made. Uh, this went district-wide and this is covering, uh, we have, uh, uh, we use equitable Lincoln Investment, um, Nationwide, Valick. I think that's it. I may have missed one. No, that's it. Uh, there are, they are the organizations that were affected. Uh, so this is a interest calculation that totals seven hundred dollars, uh, for those late payments, uh, that occurred, uh, and this will be distributed to those individuals that participate in those plans. Are there any questions on the finance?
Yes, I do have a question. Oh, I'm sorry. Um, you said for the foundation, um, you thought it was approved in August?
Right, so we had one, uh, uh, when we, uh, for the building principal, for the high school principal.
Right.
Uh, and at that time, I thought that that contract went a little bit longer than what it did, but it ended, um, I want to say June thirtieth. And by that time, we had hired a new high school principal.
So this high school principal is currently working at the high school?
Yeah, this is, this is the assistant principal that's, uh, in for a staff member that's out on workman's comp.
And we discussed that in executive session months back?
Yeah, I mean, I do remember that, but just like you said, that, um, he thought it was approved, so my question is, we have somebody that's working in the high school that the boy hasn't approved of just yet. Is that what you're saying?
Well, that's why I have it as a ratification. So we did discuss it, but the, I did not put the resolution on to cover from the exact time that he started, and we wanted to have them in place before the school year started.
Okay, so this is a question for, um, our solicitor, is, is that, um, okay for us to do that as a board member for, uh, uh, to have someone working in our facility without the board approving it?
Cynthia, certainly not recommend, it's certainly not, certainly not recommended as the usual course, but as you may recall, and the board may recall, from time to time, we hire, for example, teachers that have to start right away.
Right.
And then there's like maybe a month or a month and a half delay until they get, actually get on the, uh, agenda because of start time, school requirements, that sort of thing. So, uh, I think as long as we ratify it, everything will be fine. Certainly, it's not, it's not recommended, but now and again, it happens with all boards, and that's why there's a ratification.
Right, but, I mean, uh, you know, just out of concern that if we have someone that's working in our facility and something may happen, I mean, would it fall on us or, I mean, I, I'm just thinking ahead.
I'm not, I'm not exactly sure what, what you would be referring to, but if there was an incident that occurred, certainly de facto by, by the, by the mere fact that we have permitted this person to perform services as a part of the district, that would be considered as a, an informal approval of the board. So, I mean, there would be legally this tacit approval by the board by reason of this person working, being permitted to work, and that would be subject to ratification at a later date, but, uh, I don't know exactly what you might have in mind, but certainly I think the court would consider that the board had approved this person as, let me give you an example. Let's say this person wasn't, got hurt on the job.
That's what I was thinking of, yes.
Okay, well, so, you know, if this person got hurt on the job, I don't think a court would, and, and, and we took the position, well, you were never approved, we're not going to pay your workers' comp claim because, we're going to deny your workers' comp claim because you weren't approved by the board. That just wouldn't fly. That just wouldn't fly.
Okay. Okay, so if, I mean, I, I'm just, you know, asking, um, you know, for my knowledge here, so if something does happen, you know, to any employee that the board hasn't approved of, can they come after us, uh, if something happened to them?
Not, not if, not if they receive the same benefit that any employee, that any other employee would receive, so unless the board, unless the board decided to take the position, which I would consider to be untenable, and I would recommend against, to deny that person simply because the position had not yet had the opportunity to be ratified, they, there would be no problem because they would be treated just like any other employee, and that would be my recommendation to do so.
Okay, thank you.
The, 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 the country, the, the, um, the opposite of that would be to deny, to, to say, well, even though we allowed you to work, we're not going to treat you just like any other employee, and I, I just don't think that would be equitable, considered to be equitable by the court.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mm-hmm. I have turned it off.
Next, we have our human.
Okay, I'm sorry. If I could just cut, uh, go ahead, Dr. Warner. No, I just wanted to cover the one item on, uh, the HR agenda. Uh, this is item eleven. Uh, and in the August meeting, uh, we approved items eight, nineteen and twenty. Again, that was the August twenty-fourth meeting, items nineteen and twenty, and those contracts read June, July one, twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty-eight. And they should have read June, July one, twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty-seven. So all this is doing is just, uh, changing the resolution to agree with the agreed-upon contract, which was a, um, a, as I said, the contracts are written to end June of twenty-seven, so this is just correcting that resolution.
So, uh, this is for the? So this is for the school police and security employees' contract, are you saying?
And for the confidential staff.
So there was, uh, uh, an error in the date. Uh, it should have been August the twenty-fourth.
July.
It should have been July twenty-third to?
July one.
July one, twenty-twenty-three, to July thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight.
No, that, that was the error.
So it should have been July the first, twenty-twenty-three, to July thirtieth?
June thirtieth.
I'm sorry, June the thirtieth to twenty-twenty-seven.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. And that concludes my report.
Um, any other questions for human resources? Everything else is standard stuff. Next, we have policy. Parents, student advisory?
Parents, student advisory, there's been no meeting. We should have the discussion at some point about who the lead board member is going forward, and then we can start planning meetings again and look for either, either late December or possibly January for the next parent student advisory meeting.
Yes, Ms. Teresa and Ms. Woodfolk.
Co-chairing is Ms. Woodfolk.
I didn't know that you would agree, but if that's where we're going, that's fine. Then I'll talk to the two of you.
You were here, I told you, you said thank you for nominating you. So the lead individuals from the board would be Ms. Woodfolk, thank you, and Ms. Harris-Johnson, thank you. I will support you guys if need be.
I will reach out to the two of you about next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, property.
Good evening, ooh, good evening, everyone. Um, I have a few items to just give updates on. Um, first, uh, item is, um, some of the lights, lighting issues that we've had at Academy Park. Um, we were able to take care of all the two-by-two fixtures. There's approximately fifty in the library and front lobby that were changed out. Um, we are waiting the rest of our order, um, which is close to three hundred of the other type fixtures. Hopefully, they're in next week, that's what the schedule was, there was a SNAFU when they were initially sent out. Um, once we're installing these lights, we do have to back up support with the tech from that lighting company and, um, some new software. Um, so we'll schedule that as soon as we start to make, uh, progress on the, the bulk of the lighting. Um, but we have started that, we actually, um, I'm going to, uh, jump down here, we had an electrical contractor out today to change all the, uh, burnout pole lights out front. Um, there's also a, um, a broken wire underneath where they were able to, um, determine where that break is, and we'll schedule that hopefully, um, weather permitting, in a few weeks, uh, on some of the half-days that we have coming up. Um, also with the exterior lights, we have, um, I think it's six or seven fixtures for the front of Darby Township, so we have those lights. The equipment will be moved Monday from the, um, from Academy Park, the lift, and then, um, we'll knock that out hopefully Monday afternoon. Um, also, on October twenty-first, at Delcroft, we had a car that hit the front facade for, you know, an accident, um, someone learning how to drive, I guess. Um, they're almost finished repairs, I was over there today, um, the coarse block on the interior and exterior were set, they're finishing some of the pointing, and then they said they would be out Monday to kind of finish, so that, those repairs, once we were able to obtain a company, took approximately like a week, a little over a week to, to knock out, so that, that should be wrapping up soon. Um, I was at Sharon Hill today, and over the last few weeks, or last couple of weeks, um, you know, we've been supporting the food service department and all the equipment that was purchased over the summer, so, you know, we're just ironing out the details of, uh, you know, making sure that we have the proper outlets, electrical equipment, um, plumbing, um, so we've been doing that today. I was at Sharon Hill's, um, you know, kitchen, just, uh, supporting, um, the installation of the dishwasher, making sure everything was working correctly, um, and I've been, uh, coordinating that with, um, Ms. Willis, um, you know, with that. And then lastly, last month, we, um, you know, the admin team met with GKO Architects to just discuss, um, design services for upcoming summer projects and, um, ESC upgrades, so we're looking to do some work, um, in this building, um, in this boardroom, and some other areas of the, um, of ESC. Um, we discussed timeline process, uh, billing, and just design work of what we're looking to do, so hopefully, as we, uh, come up with some, uh, ideas, we'll be, you know, presenting them, and then, um, you know, we'll make do and, and have that scheduled. Um, that is all I have for property, if there's any questions.
Question. Um, I did bypass the, um, Delcroft's, um, area where the accident happened, I just saw the outside of it, but was a lot of damage toward the, the inside as well?
We looked out, there wasn't, there wasn't, uh, a lot of damage, everything, there was no structural damage, it was really just brick, there was no damage to the windows, so they were able to be just kind of moved back and put in place, uh, they supported everything, uh, the weekend of the incident, so, uh, it could have been a lot worse, um, but we did look out, there was no electric lines hit, or the, the heating unit wasn't hit, or the door wasn't damaged, so, um, you know, we really dodged a bullet, so to speak, and?
That's good.
We looked, uh, you know, we're, we're looking into some bollard systems and some other, maybe landscaping things we can do to the front of that school, because I think this is the second time we've had an incident like that over the last several years, so that's something that's on our radar, but we want to put something out there that makes sense for the school, because I know a lot of the kids line up out there, and it's a space that's used, so you can't really just put things, and then it becomes an issue for the children, you know, on a daily basis, so we're looking to put the right stuff at the front of that school to, to hopefully not have this happen again, so.
Okay, yeah, that's good, so the, the, it, the classroom, so the kids are able to, well, I mean, where it was hit at, was it a, a, a classroom?
It, it was a classroom, and I think next to the classroom, there, there was some, um, not flex space, but maybe some offices, so that morning, our custodial team and the teacher, I believe, um, we, we flipped that room over, so we moved all the desks over to the other room.
Okay.
Nothing was damaged as far as furniture, um, because, uh, just for whatever reason, nothing really was damaged, um, you know, except, except for the facade and the brickwork, so, um, as that's done, it won't be an issue for us to really, you know, move the stuff back, if that's what we have to do, but we'll work with Mr. McDougall on that.
Good, thank you. Uh, one more thing, um, the, uh, you said the support food service installation, so is that when you're, you're updating or you're updating everything in all the schools, in all our schools, or just?
It's, the majority of the schools have, you know, newer equipment, select items that needed to be replaced, so, um, at Harris, you know, we have a new serving line coming, and I think a new oven. Um, Delcroft, we had a whole new dishwashing sink and, um, dishwasher installation put in. Um, there was, at Delcroft, I think, some new heat, uh, ovens and things like that, um, or warmers and?
Okay.
All that good stuff, so we, like I said, we've just been supporting the, um, deliveries, installation, making sure that, uh, all the electric is, uh, up to par for, you know, putting in these new units.
Mr. Curry, I just want to add one thing about the food service. If you recall, we started the pilot program at DTS.
DT, yeah.
At DTS, and so this is, we're moving it into all the schools, so that, that was the purpose of having the new equipment.
Oh, good.
Uh, and the new lines and dishwashers, so it will, uh, we moved away from the warm and serve.
Mm-hmm.
To where the staff is, uh, preparing food on, on, uh, on-site, and it has been a tremendous win over at DTS, so we're just moving it out to the other buildings.
Good, thank you. Um, I just want to thank you, because I had, uh, called you in regards to the bathrooms at the, uh, Academy Park High School, and I have asked the students how were the bathrooms, they said it is good. Uh, I just want to thank you for taking care of that problem, so thank you very much.
Got it.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Safety?
Good evening. Let's have a few, um, few items go over. Uh, the first is the evolve system. Uh, we did a walkthrough of the remaining schools in the district on Monday, um, to assess the areas for the evolve system placement. So that's completed, that's, that's one of the things that we are looking to do this place, is to see how much, um, room we had to utilize for those systems, given the size, so each school was done, we walked through each one, assessed those, to see where we placed those at. Uh, the incident, uh, reporting system, um, that I worked on during the summer is being utilized now, so, uh, district security officers will be able to record incidents and investigations, um, via, uh, Google Docs. Um, and then we have, uh, an election, I'm sorry, an election, I'm thinking about Tuesday, evidence collection protocol. Um, so school police or myself will collect evidence and place it in, uh, the evidence locker in my office, and that evidence will be held for the duration of an investigation, whether it's police-related or school-related, and once that, that investigation's completed, um, it'll either be released or destroyed. Uh, and we're still interviewing for the last security position at the high school. Previously, I'd spoke about that, but those, uh, applicants were no-shows for their interviews, so we're still looking. And that's it, that's all I have, any questions?
I do. I just want to ask about the, uh, the doors at the, uh, Academy Park. Are the alarms, are they working currently?
They, the, well, there's, there's two, the doors do work. So you have the cameras, and then by tomorrow, the audible alarms will be finalized, so once, uh, once the alarms activated, then the cameras kick on.
Okay, so I even through my walkthrough at the Academy Park, uh, because I do, I'm not going to say what they're doing, but I do see students standing at the, uh, door, and I'm thinking hypothetically that they're waiting for somebody or something, so, uh, is there a guard that, that, um, security's doors until the alarm is on or is fixed? Because, I mean, I don't want no student to open up the door for just anybody.
Right. So we briefly touched upon that in the last meeting, we do have protocols in place that I'd rather not speak about publicly. So there, there are protocols in place that?
Okay.
Is addressed before something happens.
Okay.
It's not, not, not everything's a hundred percent, but obviously, there are protocols to address if you're speaking of someone opening a door.
Right.
There, there are protocols.
Okay, because I just want to make sure that not only the students are safe, but the staff is safe as well, um, uh, because we have discussed about the, the doors on the alarm being, uh, you know, for them to be working.
Right.
And I think that is, um, something that we have to, uh, make sure that, you know, that our students and the staff are safe.
And they will be, but the system is not native to any system at all. We had to build this system from the ground up.
Okay.
There's no system you could purchase, plug and play, and do what we're doing at the high school.
Okay.
So there's different parts, different systems, and then we have to tie it into the rest of the system itself. So there, there wasn't anything on the market to just buy and put in place, so it's a custom-made system, so it takes time, but the, all that is in place and it will be secure.
Okay. Just making sure, thank you. Yeah.
I'm sorry, um, the evidence collection, has that been done in conjunction with the police department?
The only thing, obviously, we, we would be small things, like if it was like a pocket knife or something, but anything that police would be involved with, we would notify them, right? So it's at, we don't, I don't, we don't want that type of an item to be left in a school or in a classroom, so it's just holding it for the investigation and then turning it over.
Yeah, I was thinking of chain of custody issues, that sort of thing, right?
Correct, there would be a chain of custody.
Okay, thank you.
And, and then obviously, it would be turned over to them to be returned or destroyed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, at this time, we have Mr. Whistler from the Minority Center for Participation and Empowerment.
Thank you very much. I would first like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak at the very important meeting. My name is Alasko Whistler, I'm from the Minority Center for Participation and Empowerment, I'm the executive director. Uh, our program is a minority-based program that work with government, uh, and the community to ensure that, uh, uh, they improve the life of minority folks and also reduce the level of violence among, in minority communities. Uh, we have been around for some times, but at this point, the reason we are here is to introduce a program that we want to sell to your school district. So it's the mentorship, it's the mentorship project for immigrants and African-American students. So at this time, they, I will, I would like to read them, but let me tell you the two goals, we have two specific goals. One goal is to create a pathway for students who have some behavioral problems. So if you look at every school, I've been working in school districts before, every school you look at, and every student, there are students who are actually doing good in school, make good grades, make A's, go to school on time, well-dressed, and make the good grades. There are other students who go to school once in a while, uh, they are now well-dressed, neat, they're insult, they're infat, they're aggro, they're insulting, shorters, and they sometimes these students take substance. So before the, the school year ends, the teacher already know who is doing good and who is doing bad, and some of these students, when they reach twelfth grade, because of the age, they, they are just forced to graduate, they're not doing good. They got behavior problems, they have academic problems, even whom they are not doing well. So these students are students who will, at the end of the day, if they are graduate, forced to graduate, they will enter in the streets, and they will cause havoc on the society. So our pathway program, career program, is intended to ensure that these kids, before they graduate, they are counseled and as they live in the school, the school, they're going to our career program where we can help them get into life positively, guiding that process, that's the first one. The second one has to do with our immigrant students, I'm an immigrant from Liberia, West Africa. So when our kids come here, so there, so the, the second specific goal is immigrant mentorship program for students who may find it difficult to assimilate into the American school system. What do we mean? If the kids come here, uh, John If the kids come here, uh, John Brown just came from, or Jack Pablo just came from Africa and he's in the school system and he doesn't know what to do, he doesn't feel comfortable, he doesn't understand the language. Although he speaks English, but he feel uncomfortable. So what we try to do is to create a mentorship program where we have immigrants assigned to these schools. So they can feel comfortable to go to this person and explain the program. So what we did is that we look for, look for five groups from Asia, Africa, uh, La- Latino community and other groups. Uh, eh, eh, from the, from the Caribbean. And so when we have these, the mentors or mentors there, the kids can easily go and communicate with them and say, look. So if you say somebody came from the Caribbean, they will look for the Caribbean folk of person and say, look, this person come from your country and he has his issues, is there a way you can talk to him or talk to her so that she can feel good or tells her, you know, because cultures are different. And also that's why we want to do that mentorship program within the school district. And we have asked uh, the Southeast Delco School District, what it can, that made us to introduce a program. And they, so it could be a pilot program, but let's see whether it works. Yes, I don't want to read the whole thing because uh, it would take a lot of time, you have three pages. Uh, previously, uh, I think sometime two years ago, we have tried to speak with some authority in the school to see what, who, who would it, we could have the opportunity to, who would a tutorial program, after-school tutorial, where we could have our kids, or kids who have deficiency in some subject could just stay for one or two hours and get understanding of the license before going home. So these are things we asked before, uh, maybe in the future, we can get somebody. I think we spoke with the superintendent of the school at the time, I think I was 20, I think 21 or something, or 22. But this time, we have come here to talk about our mentorship program that will include the pathway, career pathway, and will help our immigrant kids who have found it difficult to assimilate into the American culture. I thank you.
Thank you. One question please, is there a cost to this?
Yes, it's, it's a cost to that. So that's the first thing, that's, I know that question was coming, it's a cost, it's a budget. So the first thing we want to ask, whether the school accept it. If the school accepts it, then maybe they will help to fund us here, or we can go to the county, or we can ask uh, people to say, look, we can get grants, or we can get some donations to fund it, but first, we'll have to know the school accept it. The guy I know, uh, you cannot go get a program in the school, whether you have money or not, with all the school district approving it. I have had a lot of problems going to schools, having conversation with schools in Delaware County, Philadelphia. When I say, oh, they say, oh, the board have to approve it first, we cannot do anything with the school district board. So once the school district board pass the idea, then we can move forward.
Thank you.
I'm just a little confused, um, uh, you, you are asking for mentors to work at our, at different schools? For uh, uh, from people, from immigrants or uh, African-American students? Um, that comes to our country? So are you asking for uh, for us to hire, um, how can I say, like uh, counselors or something? I mean, uh, no?
Excuse me, so what he's asking is, will Southeast Delco like to be a part of this mentoring program?
Right.
And so what happens is, in schools, you have many immigrants that come in here.
Right.
Some of them don't speak English.
Right.
Some of them don't feel comfortable talking to the staff in there because it is a very cultural barrier there.
Okay.
Where sometimes they just don't know, what we might think is acceptable is not acceptable to them.
Right.
Right? So I give an example, uh, when I first started teaching, I was in Southwest. It was a high population of West Africans there. I didn't know men didn't speak to women. So as a teacher, if I'm talking to you as a man and you're looking out the window, I feel that's very disrespectful.
Right.
But in their country, it's not disrespect, it's showing a sign of respect. And until he told me that, cause I had to pull him to the side, like, what's, like, I'm talking to you, you're not looking at me. And he was like, I don't mean to be disrespectful, you know, Ms. Monroe, but it's a sign of respect in my country. So that is the type of barrier that these students face when they're in these classrooms sometimes. And so what he's asking is, will the board review this, right? And do we think it's going to be a good fit for our minority population, which is very high in West African, um, students? Um, will we be willing to have this as part of the school? For assimilation into, cause the, the school system is totally different.
I understand that, but I mean, it's.
So they were not hiring anybody, it, that, they would do all the hiring. It's just like safe corridors, we approved safe corridors, they did all the hiring, they sent the paperwork to us, we approved the paperwork, then they were present in our schools. So that's what he's asking. Is this something that Southeast Delco feels or thinks that our students will benefit from it?
I'm, I'm sorry, I just have a question about the, there's a statement about wraparound support. Um, is that behavioral health-specific wraparound support?
It's no, it's just like a, like as we said, a, a pathway career program where they have, where we have some behavior, student behavior problems, behavior challenges. And so there's the program that leads to the path, career pathway. So once the kids uh, from these areas have issues and they, they find it difficult to go to get through. So our counselor, who will be there, will also work with the kids, make sure that uh, they get comfortable and guide them into career before they graduate. That would be from the, the high school students.
Thank you.
Uh, I, I, I have to read this, cause I'm totally lost. Even uh, Ms. Uh, uh, Madam President then uh, you know, explained it, but I'm, I'm, I have to read this.
Okay.
Uh, cause I have to get a better understanding of what you are asking for.
And I see you guys email, and you can always check, call me, my, my, the contacts are there. The email address, they can always respond to me, and I can always come, make a special time and give you more information.
Okay.
Hi, everyone, um, my name is Sheila Carter, I'm also um, a part, uh, Board President for the program. And I hear some of your concerns, and I don't know if maybe I can address them for you. So what Alaska has, um, Ms. Monroe stated, we will provide all the staff that will come into the school. And we all know that in our district, we are getting a lot of immigrants coming in. And as, yours was a very good um, example of not understanding the different cultures, cause I too have to learn some of these things. So once the program is approved, we will hire people from different um, areas to come in. So these children will know who they can go to if they have any issues and concerns. And then we'll take those issues and concerns to your employees, because each school has counselors and support staff and things like that. So we'll kind of like be working together to make sure that not only we don't run into any behavioral programs, because we do know that sometimes we end up with um, behavioral program, problems just because of cultural differences. So once we have the people in place, we will work with you to make sure we can address any issues that can come about of having immigrants coming into our communities. I don't know if that helps you guys any better, but we will provide the, the support staff for you.
But my question is to you, who are the people that you are hiring to help these kids to understand or their laws in, in our school? So you're saying that you would do the hiring?
Yes.
You guys would?
Yes.
Who are you hiring, are they um, are, are they counselors, are they teachers, or, I mean, who are they?
So the people that will be hired, as, as um, Alaska stated, he, um, his, from where he's from, we will hire immigrants that will be better served to address the issues. And yes, we won't, we will look at the standards of who you hire and when you bring support staff into your school, as far as if they have to have a master's degree, a bachelor's degree. We're just not going to just bring in aides and things like that, we're bringing in educated, professional people to work with the students.
Right, so they're going to come in and they are going to uh, uh, help them to adjust?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Our culture?
Yes.
How we are?
Yes, yes, because they will have to be able to adjust to, as you stated, they can't sit in a classroom looking out the window and I think you're disrespectful to me. So we have to go in and explain to them, okay, now, this is how it's done here. And even if you're on an elementary and a high school level, it's still going, you're still going to have to adjust to it when you get to the higher education level, you know? So we can help them adjust at this level, that helps them when they go further, if they go into the workplace, you know? Cause everybody's not going to go to college. But this is going to help them so as they progress and get older in our communities, they understand the culture of America, basically.
So uh, so, okay, when you say that you are going to bring, you're going to do the hiring, okay? Is, is, is that what you're saying?
Yes, that is true.
Okay, and you're going to be the ones that's paying them?
Yes, yes.
So, so you're just asking the voice, uh, can you allow these people to come in and to our facility? Right, I know that part, but I'm saying, once we review it, you're asking, can we um, um, counsel?
So, so Cynthia, you, you know how um, within the school district, we have after-school programs and things like that, that we make fun through? Okay?
Okay.
Okay, that helps you.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Carter, one question, how long has this organization been into existence?
Uh, how many years, Alaska, is it, are, are we on the year, two?
Yeah, we're about, we're pretty new.
Three?
We're about three years.
Three years? Three years, three years. Yes, and, and Alaska, he didn't share his background with you, but um, you have a master's, correct?
Yes.
He has a master's in social work, he's actually a former um, CYS worker. And he has um, experience working in mental health, which is good. And then my background also, that's how we met, is through mental health, and I also have a, a master's degree. So we're going to um, be working together to make sure that we get um, really educated, good staff to come in and work with the children. Okay, thank you.
One more question.
Okay, so I actually have a few, um, because we did get, you know, we did get the email ahead of time and did some research. And I see that, like you said, you're fairly new, you're fairly new here, but the program also exists in Delaware and Minnesota, correct?
Yes. We want, what, our intention is to expand the minority center in every minority state. So we just, we just opened, and once we opened it, about a year ago or something, we had a, a program established in Hennepin County, uh, in Minnesota and Wilmington, Delaware.
Okay, so the reason I'm asking, a couple reasons. Um, your website shows a space in Lansdowne and also a space in, I believe, West Philadelphia. They both appear to be homes. So can you tell me how that space is utilized, what programs are currently ran out of that space? And then you also mentioned that this would be a pilot program, which leads me to believe that maybe you're not already coordinated with some other districts or some other schools. So if you're not in any other schools and you don't have a large enough space to run these programs yet, um, do you have larger spaces in these other states? Like if it started in Minnesota, how much has the program grown out there? Are they working in six, in schools? Are they just running after-school programs out of their own space? And what are the success of those programs?
So uh, the program started in Delaware County, we started in the house. But then we, then we expanded to Philadelphia, where we have an office. It's not a house, if you enter the office, you will know that it's not a, it's not a house. And we have, we be having anti-violence activities, we be having after-school program. In the summer, we had a lot of kids, we had a summer program, we have a big closing, and we give kids uh, backpacks. It will be having a lot of programs like women program, health program, we have a men program. And we did a march through Delaware County and Philadelphia, of rural mainstream on anti-violence march. So we be having a couple of programs. But up a space, right now, uh, we don't, we may not have big space to keep all the kids, but right now, if you enter our building, you will know, you will be comfortable with that. We have space for kids to do some work, we got, we have computer setup, we got a little more like a, uh, resource center, which is, which, which is good. But for this time, because of the amount of kids we want to cater to, we cannot, everyone cannot fit in the building, so we are coming to the schools. So we have already communicated with the Upper Derby School, we communicated with the, the Upper Derby School District, the William Penn School District, and we also communicated with the Auburn-Chesapeake School District. So we are not only come to Southeast, uh, Delco, we trying to reach to every school district here. And we also communicated with the Philadelphia School District, so we trying to do school districts.
So basically, um, this is our first presentation. And uh, once the program is started, um, the children will not, um, I know a lot of people have some concern maybe with children going into Philadelphia area, but we are actually looking at space in Sharon Hill that will um, make it easier for the kids in Southeast Delco to have a place to go outside of school in the event they need an area, uh, or a presentation we're going to have after hours. So we won't be actually taking the children into a different um, county, they will strictly be in Delaware County.
Okay, well, and.
If that helps any.
You know, I was definitely asking, cause of a couple of things, like he brought up the grant funding. Um, and if you, if, you know, if you had your own space, you could potentially get grant funding. Um, and I mean, don't get me wrong, this sounds amazing. It is very difficult for American public schools to be culturally relevant for immigrant students. Um, I work in early childhood education, we struggle with it all the time. But this isn't something that would cost a little bit of money. So that's where the concern would come in. And um, if you're trying to reach out to all these school districts, I would hope that the county would be willing to offer you more funding and more assistance. And I do hope that, um, I'm, I'm sure you're quite connected and know all, like, everyone. I would love to see our politicians jump in and support you guys with this. Um, because honestly, until they fund our schools fairly, this would be very difficult for public schools to handle.
Okay, as far as funded. And I, and I know, and as you stated, um, it, it is important for us to look at this type of program, because I know on a personal level, I have a brother-in-law who's married to um, a woman from Cambodia, and she has sisters that are ten, have children in our district. And they have reached out to me because they, coming into the district from Philadelphia, didn't feel safe and were picked on and things like that. So, you know, I think things like this is great to know, hey, Southeast Delco, William Penn, whoever, we're looking at making sure all our children, when they come, no matter where they come from, that we are able to make them comfortable and educate them the way that we feel as though they should be here in, in Pennsylvania, basically. So we are going to be looking at some state funding and also reaching out to our congresspeople to see, because there is money out, I, I, I know, I'm looking at the grants. So we are going to be applying for some, some of those grants also. Okay?
Yeah, and, and also for the county, thank you for brought that up. Uh, I'm also a Commissioner for Immigrant Affairs for Delaware County, so I'm one of the Commissioners of Immigrant Affairs. Uh, so uh, we, we will be, I'll be introducing that in our, our Immigrant Commissioners Meeting. And also we have, I think on the 20th of, we meeting with the Council, Delaware County Council, and we'll also introduce that.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Once again, thank everyone for coming out and being patient. Our next meetings will be held Thursday, November 16th, at 20:23 at 7:00 PM. The organization meeting on Monday, December 4th, 2023, 6:00 PM. Congratulations to all those um, individuals that won elections on Tuesday. You're welcome. And then school board business meeting will be Thursday, December 14th, 2023, at 7:00 PM. Seeing there's no more business to be had, this meeting is adjourned.